I'll meeting the order of the Oxford Downtown Development Authority Board Meeting September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven oh six. Please rise, pay the respective flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How can you do roll call, please?
Oh geez, yes. Pete Schultz.
Here.
Rod Charles.
Excused.
Marie Powers.
Excused.
Ashley Ross.
Here.
Jacob Nicosia.
Here.
Scott Taylor.
Uh, I would say excuse.
Jay Choi. Melissa Cornelis.
Here.
Holly Pfeiffer, here.
Alright, thank you very much. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Consent agenda?
I will make a motion to receive and file consent agenda items A, B, C, and D as presented.
Support.
Moved by Ross, supported by Nicosia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same thing. Financials?
Motion approved. Financials, items A and B, with bill of the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents for August twenty twenty-five.
Second?
Moved by Nicosia, supported by Ross. Any questions, comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Melissa?
Cornelis.
Cornelis. Yep, here, present. Jay Choi.
Yes.
Holly Pfeiffer, yes. Jacob Nicosia?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Pete Schultz?
Yes. Karen, thank you. DDA report, the Orkemy report.
Pete, do you want to do it or you don't?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Okay. Most of the discussion centered around the trolley and current status of it, what needs to be looked at. Mentioned at that time also about needing to find a place to store for the wintertime. Um, it was also talked about that ideally would be time to, if we're gonna sell it, to sell it at the end of the season so that we don't have to worry about storing it. So there is um more discussion to follow on that, but I believe there was supposed to be something coming for the EV, so it should be farther, you know, down on the agenda for that part of it then. And then we briefly discussed a quick overview of the Verdant Street project and with the gazebo, gave an update on that. And then Kimberly gave us an update on volunteer program and how great of a job Holly is doing. So, thank you very much. And that was about it.
EV report?
Uh, people are missing the report.
We are. My apologies, I was out of control.
So, we, actually just Marie and I, um, we looked into more of the trolley information. Uh, we looked at some used trolleys ranging from thirty thousand to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, depending on uh the age, you know, model, how long it has. These are all over the country, so obviously we'll have to tack on some kind of way, you know, if we're paid to have a transporter or not. We'll have to look at, you know, if we need an EDA compliant trolley or not. I know the one that we have now, it was EDA compliant and then we had to like fix something and we never got it fixed, so it's been functioning as EDA non-compliant. So, I don't know if we have, if that's something we have to do too, but um depending on what spec we're looking for, longevity, obviously paying a hundred and eighty grand, you're gonna get a little better material, better quality trolley, so. We did um discuss finalizing whether we're going to continue with Lake Orion D or not. And if we don't, there's plenty of ideas for just Oxford, Township and Village going down as far as then Indian Lake neighborhood. Right by where Jimmy John's and then Chicken Shack are, all the way up to River Road where Meyer is. So, having um Oxford Lakes subdivision, Waterstone, possibly Indian Lakes, that's a little bit hectic, lots of roads and stuff, but having those two neighborhoods along with the Legacy Center and some of these plazas in between, I think it could be really good. Some major events that we talked about was a tough market. How like, there's thousands of people at, you know, the quarry right down the street and if we can get them into downtown, refreshing beer afterward or a meal, like that's an opportunity we're missing out on. That trolley could be really good for that, I mean. And there's a huge lacrosse tournament for, I think, middle school and high school at Seymour Lake Park. You know, they're a big opportunity that we can take advantage of for downtown businesses.
They don't have those there anymore.
Oh, they haven't done it?
No, they moved to a bigger location. Those were insanely well attended. I could figure out where they are though.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
I guess that's worth it, but um timing, some of our downtown events with Seymour Lake Park events, you know, these are all things that would be used to trolley to kind of, you know, be the right straight in between and connect a lot of these events for Oxford as a whole. So we thought, you know, Marie and I thought that the businesses would still, you know, want to have some kind of transportation or even like having like a date night, so subdivisions, bringing people into town, just taking the driving off of them would really help get people in, so. We have a few ideas, I guess we'll talk more about it, you know, at the next committee meeting, I guess we'll send the candidates to it, but um it seems like we want to go ahead and try to replace the trolley.
Was there any discussion around um a recommendation if we should continue our partnership with Lake Orion or stick with just Oxford?
We, both, Marie and I, thought that it'd be better if we just went on our own. Instead of waiting for them applying on them and kind of not being full, all in, like we have been, I think it's just more that we want to host the trolley program.
Ashley?
Oh, I was just gonna suggest if we could pause and all trolley talk until C.
Okay.
And then I have a recommendation whether now or later to move eight D up so that our friend here doesn't have to wait all night while we talk about trolley.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
He seems to be very intrigued by it.
Support? Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and take a motion down.
I'll make a motion to uh move eight D Brownfield Redevelopment Authority discussion up to in front of eight A.
Support.
It's been moved by Ross, support by Nicosia, to move eight D up before eight A. Uh, any discussion? Paul in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same thing? Alright. Very good. Uh, promo committee?
Okay, um, so we had a really good meeting. Um, we were mainly focusing on Scarecrow Festival. It seems to be pretty well coming together and they've pretty much all of it done and going. We are looking for a tractor driver, so if you know anybody?
And trailer.
And tra- oh, I thought we had the tractor and trailer.
We have the driver, we don't have the tractor and trailer, unfortunately.
Oh, I thought it was backwards. Okay.
The trailer that was identified is not suitable for taking passengers, so.
Got it.
That's what happened with that one.
Um, we do have, uh, we came up with a new idea about um having a local dance studio put together, let's say like a thriller dance by video ahead of time. To where we could do like a flash mob style with possibly a drone to catch it, the footage. Everyone seemed excited about that. I think we've reached out to an instructor and she was willing to do it. They were already working on thriller for their studio. So, um, it could be fun and we're hoping that it'll bring more people into town for the fun. Let's see, for the downtown day, we are promoting it, um, but we're not gonna run anything special because it's right next to Scarecrow Festival. And our attention is on that right now. Um, let's see, decorating day is September seventeenth. Uh, do you know the time? Is that ten thirty?
Yeah, so if anybody wants to volunteer, have any volunteers to send, we would appreciate it.
And then we added another meeting, so we're gonna do September twenty-second at ten AM at Evergreens.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any questions? Simmons? Thank you. Uh, design committee report.
I want this. Do you want to do it? You want me to do it? Alright, you're better at it.
No, I'm not. I think primarily what we spoke about was the um decorating day. We did an inventory within our um storage area just to make sure that we had enough materials and then made um a kind of a list of additional things that we needed to do for decorating day. Um, so all of that is in motion. Things are being delivered and have been delivered over the last week, so we're just gonna gather together on the day and get it placed instead of doing, we're gonna do four different like scenes in downtown, just trying to make things a little bit more contained for watering purposes. So we'll have one in Washington Square and then one in the park and then the two on the east side in our new um community spaces. We'll have like a little scene that people can see. And I, I think, Holly, do you want to talk about the last, the didactic?
Didactics? So, um, we have, you know, we have a couple of different samples that are out there, but I don't think any have been chosen as far as which ones are, we're gonna do, or I believe Joe was looking at um materials, like where we could order them from and get some information that way. Yeah, and potentially also maybe even a better design of what we've already started. We've kind of given, you know, where we've got the backdrop being like the larger building and then smaller, clearer photos upfront with the historical information that was provided. So, I mean, they're coming together, but nothing's been like decided.
Any other questions, Rick? Thank you. And the Home and History Subcommittee, did that meet this month? So, moving on to the Executive Directory Report.
We had a relatively slow month in fact that we had no official events. Our events kind of closed out right before our last board meeting. But we did do the Michigan Downtown Association IG Takeover Day, so we had an opportunity to highlight Oxford to all members of MDFU, which was great. We met with some of our partners at Oakland County and throughout the um DDA community to talk about life and what's going on here in Oxford and Pinkney and things like that. Um, also, I wasn't there this year, but the dragon boat races, they came in second place, so congratulations to the team. That's very exciting. I mean, they're ready to go back already to win number one, so that's very exciting.
Should've won.
And that's about all of the highlights, I think.
Moving on to unfinished old business, it'll be eight A now with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity, Pete, for this evening. It's very kind of you to uh to adjust the agenda after sitting through an hour and fifteen minutes of public comment on a dear management system for Grand Haven. I kindly.
Trolley talks are fun.
Uh, I'm, I don't know how much you know about the request before you, so I'm, I'm gonna probably give you too much and I'll pause if you have questions, but I don't mean to please raise your hand, stop me, wave your hand, whatever you want to do, but. Um, the project, are you guys familiar with the project at one forty-seven? Okay. So, um, as part of that, it's a thirty-two unit townhome project. Uh, and it will be a four-four unit townhomes, two eight unit townhomes. Um, as part of that, we have a brownfield housing tip request. I don't know if you're familiar with the Amendment Stat three-one, it's under the Brownfield Act, it can be confusing, uh, but it is a housing tip request. As part of that, it's all based on tax increment financing. You see, the DDA is familiar with that, you guys are funded, which is why we're here. Uh, we are asking for the partnership and your support in allowing pass-through to allow Brownfield to take precedent to reimburse the project over a period of fifteen years. Uh, the, the primary eligible activities included in this plan are site preparation and infrastructure. We do have some potential rent loss, and I'll get into that a little bit. Um, the developer's commitment would be for a term of fifteen years to maintain a hundred and twenty percent or less very median income. That is the threshold for the project. Mishja's been very deferential to the communities that support these projects, but as part of that, in order for the project to benefit from that tax increment financing, we're here to ask for your support. That pass-through would be for the term of the plan. Following that, the DDA is captured, presumed, DDA continues to get uh what they're getting off the property now. But obviously, in the current environment, I think everybody appreciates, everything's more expensive to build and finance, so this support is really helping to make the project pencil and attract lenders to the project to support it. Total project is about ninety and a half million. The tip request before you is about two point two. Under that potential rent loss, uh, we are utilizing, I guess if you flip to the back, you guys got a copy? So, this is utilizing, Mishja has posted control rents, uh, and in comparison to the project rents at a hundred and twenty percent, um, that kind of cost differential is a solid five or financing gap, uh, they call it potential rent loss. This program was amended after one was amended in two thousand and three. They really didn't start implementing this program until two thousand and four, but it's helped unlock a lot of projects that just simply didn't pencil on the basis of the current environment of rent. You can see, it's kind of highlighted in yellow, under the program, project is technically eligible for one point one. We're only seeking five hundred and sixteen thousand balance of the eligible activities for all the infrastructure and site preparation. So, I guess I would pause there, I'm kind of throwing a lot at you. Uh, I'll pause there and see if there are any questions thus far.
Eric?
Um, one question that I've been having going through all of this is, it talks about the proposed begin date, but when does this actually go into effect? At the completion of all the events or how does this work?
With the, uh, yeah, so it, obviously there's lease-up periods and we'll have to work through that with Brownfield Authority. That would be outlined in the reimbursement agreement. But the, the proposal is for a total of seven units under this program. Uh, the tip would be generated from all three units, uh, the entire development as a whole. Uh, so some of that will need to work through with the county Brownfield Authority. This would be going through the county Brownfield Authority. Um, we would need, obviously, your support, your pass-through, who will come back to the village for leave. And this proceed, I think it would be October fourteenth, uh, at that meeting for the village's consideration. Uh, they would need to concur to that in the county. But with the seven units, there will be some fluctuation in the lease-up period, uh, and then that would be a full fifteen-year term once those seven units are, are in place.
So, going on to that, you know, our taxes go out at the end of this year, so at that point, we would still capture, the full capture at that point, correct?
Uh, for this year?
Yeah.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, you, you'll continue to get what you're receiving from the property through the duration of this, this plan. It's, it's foregoing that increment for a period of time.
Okay.
Uh, I know we did, um, I think the village's attorney has some plan, um, he had one question, the county's administrative fee, uh, but absent that, I haven't seen anything. I know there was a presentation done to the village as well by the village's attorney. This was, this was, I don't know if it was earlier in the year or maybe even late last year, it was a while ago, but he, he did a pretty in-depth memo down on this, so.
I'll make a motion for the Village of Oxford Downtown Development Authority to approve and move forward with the Oakland County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority tax increment pass-through, uh, accepted.
I'll support it. Been moved by Ross, supported by Schultz. Any other questions, comments? And can we have roll call vote on that, please?
Yes. Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Jacob Nicosia?
Yes.
Holly Pfeiffer, yes. Jay Choi?
Yes.
Melissa Cornelis?
Yes.
Listen, Karen?
Thank you all very much.
Right.
I do have a tractor, but it's over in Green City and it probably takes.
You can take the trolley.
Thank you. Alright, next one, under, it could be eight B at this point, is the sidewalk repairs?
So I think this is just a, where we're at with the sidewalk repairs. We have everything in motion to at least start on October sixteenth. Um, originally it was October sixth, but they pushed it out. We're having our brick comp meeting on the seventh of October. Um, but everything's looking good for that, um, project to move forward with a potential completion date next to end of November.
Any questions? Very good. Then the next one would be the gazebo plan update?
Yes, so I apologize for not getting this in the packet. It was sent to me this morning, I think. Uh, but we had, so I believe Pete and Jess and Joe all sat down and met with the, of, of Oaklanded bidder.
Yeah.
For the project to go back and look at potential um material changes to the railings and potential cost savings. So, this particular amendment is for that. There were three options that were submitted and option one was the one that our, our project manager is recommending. And that will say, it looks like, um.
Thirty-five hundred.
It's seven, twelve grand total. I think it's twelve grand total. So it's basically, it's, it's taken that Fiverrian one and replacing that one.
Yeah, it should be option, I believe it says option, option one, is just replacing the post at the brick comps. And attaching the railing directly to the column as opposed to having a port.
Yeah, it's the.
So.
Thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
So we would go with alternate.
It's number two, like she's first number ten. Uh, yeah, so alternate two over used at by thirty-five hundred is what he's recommending.
So you all can make an emotion kind of after, hopefully after.
I'm not aware of that.
We haven't talked on that.
Sorry, I'm just looking at all here.
Yeah.
That, um, I know we met, the day we talked to the contractor, he even mentioned the fact that, you know, it's existing old conduit, everything that's up there, but at this point, it wasn't in the specs to redo that. The only thing, an electrical portion of it was to redo the receptacles, make them um GFI receptacles outside, plus some stuff, you know, covers on everything right now, it's to do the whole thing for weather type. And unless there was something that was to come down from the building official or something, if he would said, yeah, gotta do it, but having to work on that, so.
I, I remember Joe saying something very specifically about that with DPW, so we may want to check with him. I assume this needs more conversation if we're gonna pick up that head off. Um, so what are we looking for? Are we looking for uh a decision on going for alternate number two today?
Yes, we're hoping to walk the ways that we can start getting the project moving.
And we're assuming the alternate one was provided for pricing information at this point? Or are you also looking for approval of alternate one, the GFCI upgrades for the outdoor electrical?
I think that would be up to the board to decide if they want to approve that pending conversations with Joe. Like I said, I'm not aware of, and I was on vacation when the group met with the bidder, so I don't know what was discussed exactly, and Pete's indicating that wasn't part of what was.
I haven't seen any email regarding that and I don't think Jeff is really thinking either on it, on it either, so.
So, we can, option one is to hold until next month and not include that as part of it, or we can approve it, have your conversations with Joe, so we don't have to wait until next month.
We can approve the base, no, the, the alternate two base bid, allowing them to continue working. If we do have to do the electrical, then we can approve his electrical at, like, that next month's meeting, that's not a problem, because it'll be probably in the middle of construction at that.
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, um, Joe's allowed to approve under five grand, if I'm not mistaken, but I think that's, that's a good one to, to understand if DPW is gonna be tackling some of that. I think that was sort of the conversation, but I can't, I don't want to go on record.
Yeah, you know, we've had high-level discussions about repairing the electrical box and having some external plugs for us to use without having to open the whole box, but I don't know anything for now.
Yeah, that's not part of this.
Okay, so, motion to approve at alternate number two, um, to replace her, for the intex railing system, uh, deduct of thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, and all, well, I guess probably need two separate motions for that, maybe. And, okay, and then approve alternate number one as well, pending conversations uh with the village manager in the amount of forty-eight ninety-nine sixty-one.
Okay, so you're, you're asking to approve the electrical portion if needed?
As needed.
As needed, and then the other portion as far as the railing change?
Correct.
And then we'll do a separate motion for the actual bid of the rest of the construction. Correct?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Alright. Alright, and I'll second that. So, motion by Nicosia to approve the electrical portion, alternate one for forty.
Forty-eight hundred. Forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
And alternate two for thirty-five hundred. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Ashley? Ross? Do I have to say both names? Anyway.
Yes.
Okay. Jacob Nicosia?
Yes.
Holly Pfeiffer, yes. Jay Choi? Melissa Cornelis?
Yes.
Pete Schultz?
Yes.
That part of the program? Alright, so now we need approval on the base bid and then that amount of the forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and eleven cents would be modified, subtracting thirty-five hundred from that. Correct? Alright. Been moved by Ross, second by Holly. Very good. To approve the, so in essence, now we're looking at forty thousand four hundred, no, forty thousand.
We're doing count.
Forty thousand four fifty.
Pardon?
Forty thousand four fifty.
Forty thousand four fifty and eleven cents.
Roll call. Okay. Jay Choi?
Yes.
Melissa Cornelis?
Yes.
Holly Pfeiffer, yes. Jacob Nicosia?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Did you get a approximate start date from them? Because they had the calendar, they were looking at Scarecrow sort of, almost like they're probably months of starting immediately right after that, so.
Yeah, I think he just wanted to get all the paperwork to them and then he said they could keep going.
Yes.
He didn't specify a date.
Yep, awesome. Very good. Now we're back to the favorite. The trolley status.
We said the end of the season. What does that mean?
Well, it's a great question, Jacob. I think we should discuss that. Because I actually got that same question from Noda. Apparently there was, and this is information was provided by Noda today that there was some shenanigans that happened over the weekend. And due to that, one of the drivers has refused to drive the trolley. I know for the details, again, I was out with Phil this morning, so I'm not completely caught up. But it sounds like there were some intoxicated individuals that were being disrespectful on the trolley. And the gentleman who was driving has indicated he doesn't feel comfortable or safe driving in that type of environment. So I need to look into that a little bit further and see what happened, what's going on. But I think when we originally discussed it back in April, May timeframe, we talked about early October. That being said, we do have, oh, we have had a gap of approximately four weeks throughout the summer. So we don't know if we want to add that to the end of October. Right now, however, they're sourcing, trying to find a driver for Saturday. So there is potential that they could come back and say, we don't have a driver for Saturdays going forward. So that is also a consideration.
So if you're saying originally we were going to end it in October?
Correct. I believe it was early to mid-October depending on the weather.
And then after that, it would be?
Special events.
Special events.
Which I think we have two to three that we would have between end of November and mid-December.
Polar Express being the final?
Correct.
And our contract's up April? When? Next year? Noda, Noda, yes, April twenty-sixth.
Well, the contract is Noda and Lake Orion.
I think it was up three, wasn't it?
It shouldn't have been all three.
It is. I'm just saying, so that's like, yes.
We can't, just as an FYI, the contract we signed is through April.
Correct.
Up next year with all three of us. So when we talk about potential future, that's what we're at right now.
In the past, has there been anything? Yeah, because of Randi or St. Patrick's Day, didn't it?
Yes, so at the last Noda meeting, we had some good discussion. The Noda board agreed that they would honor the contract pending, obviously, some outliers through April. There has been no official vote or anything, but the discussion lends itself that there's a few caveats. One, they don't want really anything to do with alcohol. So I think we would no longer be able to use the trolley if we move forward for the pump crawl. Even if that's within our current contract period, they will not service events like that. That was a decision made prior to this discussion anyway. Until what you just said, they seem to fine with everything moving forward, understanding that people that ride the trolley may have, you know, drinks out and are undertaking, but we've never had a situation until now. They do not want to continue with this trolley. Period. I think full stop. Again, no vote yet, but it was heavily implied. It doesn't meet their standards. It doesn't meet any of our needs. It's very unreliable. So I think that was, it sounds like we have some recommendations coming out committees about what to do moving forward. Sounds like we have some different routes, but we basically have to figure everything out by April.
Okay. After, going back to my question again, after the Polar Express, normally there is nothing except St. Patrick's Day.
So it's dependent on the year. Excuse me. We have had it run in the past for, I think we've had like a restaurant week or an ice fest. We did it this past year. I think the biggest issue was there was no heat and the drivers refused to drive it with no heat, rightfully so. Enough for that. My understanding is the heat has been fixed and resolved, so that should not be an issue. At this time, of course, we still have several months to go, but at this time, I think we've been discussing potentially one larger event instead of these smaller onesie twosies. So there might be the potential of having something in February. Do we have to have the trolley? No. Right now, no. But it would be something we would. It could, it could be at that.
But meantime, the contract, the contract currently would still get affected though?
It would, yes. But they are pushing to not, the only event that would have as of now would be the St. Patty's Day.
And they, I mean, telling you that's gonna be. And it doesn't even necessarily come in from our board. It's with all the new insurance, all the new stuff with Smart. They're just, it's, it's not a good area that they want to be in. If it's targeted specifically for drinking.
Right.
A pump crawl.
Good point. So in essence.
What are the obstacles of hiring our own driver?
Unless we hired a management company to also do that, then we would be responsible for hiring, background testing, drug testing, scheduling, all of the HR that goes along with that, performance reviews. I don't believe that's something we would want to do from our standpoint.
Do we have data to review to see how many people come in for the trolley? How many people ride it on a daily basis? What, where they're coming from?
So yes, we have numbers that they, they look a little quicker. And that was shared earlier this year. I can get that to you. The problem is, is they're not, they're not tracking it like this person rode down to Lake Orion and now they're riding back. So we don't, you know, we have to make the best guess with those numbers. Is it due divided in half? I'd say half of these people are, you know, full trip. Unfortunately, right now, we no longer have access to Placer AI data, which is the data that polls where people are coming from. The last that we have had, I think it was April, I want to say, was the last poll that we got. And we didn't specifically ask, you have to ask for like a specific date or a series of dates that would show that information.
I, I will say too, I would take any data coming from it right now with a grain of salt. I think we've all heard time and time again, like, is trolley running today? Where is it? And so if there was a reliable, consistent schedule, numbers will look very different than what, hey, I can, you know, risk not hopping the trolley tonight, call an Uber like my grandma if I need to to pick me up. So it's, I think that there's, we've lost a lot of credibility with the program just in its current state.
Hundred percent. It is.
Agreed.
It is a huge consideration, I think, our credibility. I don't see the potential of really rebuilding that in the current state.
Ashley, a question for you.
Yeah.
I guess it would be Noda related to anything. If we were to spend, you know, hundred and thirty thousand, whatever you said, to buy a, you know, a newer trolley that's reliable and in good shape, having Noda drivers, again, still doesn't get us coverage for like St. Patrick's Day, still doesn't get us coverage for pump crawls, still doesn't get for that kind of stuff. So on one hand, our hands are tied for, I mean, at least a third of our usage. Peacefully.
Would that also affect if, for the recommendations of going into the neighborhoods? Let's assume that date nights, you're gonna go into downtown, have dinner, have a couple of drinks, whatever people do on date nights. Is that a concern from a Noda standpoint? Like, would that be?
It really didn't seem to be. It seemed to be these designated events where the whole point of it is to go and drink. Nobody's saying, like, they're all very reasonable people, but they, they don't want to do anything that's specifically targeted towards drinking event. I guess just to give, I think we have a couple of decisions. One, we need to decide, you know, it's kind of, we either buy a new trolley or we don't do the program. I, I think that's step one. Like, are we willing to invest in it and go even to step two? Step two is where do we go? So we bought a trolley, now what? We have to cover the insurance now. We have new agreements. Do we do it within the township where we do these neighborhoods? Do we do, you know, special events, keep something with Orion? A newer trolley means we could have more stops. And a handful of us have seen some prototypes specifically for an app that tracks the trolley. And not even, I don't even know if it necessarily needs to be an app, but it's live tracking. You could call the trolley, you could scan it when you're in the neighborhood, so it might not always go into Waterstone. But if you're at the stop and you scan it, oh, trolley's coming, it's three minutes away and you can start seeing it. So there's a lot of potential to move forward with it, but there's a big investment. And I don't think that matter that we have reflects what the program could be. And if it does, that's what I'm saying, something. I think the Noda board is agreeable to move forward. I think, I think even Lynn, some of the drivers absolutely love it. We could expand to ours. We just can't do that right now with
the way it is.
The shape it's in. And then we also have to consider, we also have to pay, we're paying a lot more now than we were. And I, I don't have the numbers, but you could provide that.
The, the other point, or my thought on the whole thing is, I mean, I don't believe we have, I don't, I don't think we have the money in the budget for us to walk out at the beginning of 2026 and spend a hundred and some thousand dollars to buy a a trolley. Probably to sell this, we might get two thousand, three thousand something for it. So I mean, I.
I think if, if this were a priority, we would have to really look at our current portfolio of what we're doing and see if we can pull the money from elsewhere. But I think it would severely restrict us from being able to do.
A lot.
Operate the way we're currently operating, certainly. And then if you're adding in additional hours for the drivers, that's an additional cost. If we're not having Lake Orion support the program, that is a large cost that we will take on. I know we can get sponsors or we can look for sponsors. Yeah, it would be financially a very, very large program.
So no matter what we did, still going into 2026, starting to, starting to, you know, April going forward, we basically at this point would almost all have to agree that we don't have a trolley. Because I mean, you can't, this one we have right now can't operate past that date because A, Noda's not gonna drive it or operate it, nor do I. I don't think any of us want to take that risk of everything that goes along with it at that point. So I would almost say feasibly, like I said, as of the end of April or whatever your date was, we, we no longer have a trolley, in essence. And that would be, you know, a very good time to start advertising it as of the first of January or whatever you wanted to say, to say, hey, we have trolley for sale, that kind of thing. But then again, trying to get stuff put together that quick to turn around and come up with some alternative would be very rough. Because again, I'm sure they're not gonna take payments. They're gonna want their full amount, so, you know, maybe we, you know, maybe we get one for eighty thousand, but still eighty thousand isn't just sitting there in, you know, the budget doing enough.
I mean, we do have a healthy fund balance. So if we felt that this was a large priority and a huge benefit for the DDA for the village, that would be something to consider.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there another option other than Noda for bus drivers and management system? Like, is there anybody else out there that does that?
There, we looked into a private trolley company and they're incredibly expensive. I think for one weekend, it was about what we were paying.
Right, but I mean, for, like, notice applies as bus drivers and the insurance and all of that good stuff and the scheduling. Is there another company that?
I'm not aware of any other than.
Would manage? Is that getting, yeah?
That we have, I think we're very lucky that we have partners that are willing to work with us. Because I don't think in normal circumstances, we would even have a Noda.
Okay. Because I know I've heard of like MTA and like, I don't know anything about the busing industry.
Like out of their.
Sure, area?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, just want to make the point, if we don't have a decision by April, there's nothing saying we couldn't come back and relaunch trolley 2027, 2028 at a different point. Instead of us going into a deficit, pulling from the fund balance. I feel like trolley's always been a great idea, but it's kind of like it's a chicken and egg. Like, we're never caught up with it. And it's always a problem where if we had the time to look at grants, to look at that kind of stuff, we might be able to fund it in a better way. And when it does come back, it would just be, it would be a good start from the get-go.
I think at that point, with a, with a good, clear, well-thought-out business plan going forward as far as exactly, okay, what is, number one, what is the purpose of it? And what do we expect to, to get from it? You know, for that much money, what is the best? That's, running that, like, that much of it, I mean, we're hoping there's a huge increase in business downtown. And I, I mean, that would take a whole lot to really make the store to say, wow, we're, you know, we got ten percent every single weekend on this thing, you know? So I mean, that's, you know, that kind of background with that kind of thought going into it or whatever our plan would be, you know, something we would have to consider before we pull the, pull the plug out.
I think you would get, not enough trolleys that are gonna be profitable, right? But like, I think we could do marketing inside, marketing outside. There's lots of ways to move forward with it. With the date nights, you're, I, I think you would have, there's something to this program. But right now, to meet all these deadlines, it's very expensive. And we don't have the numbers and I, I also can't say though, what would this would look like in a year or two with Noda. So I want to keep that in mind. Not that Noda would be disagreeable. I think they'd be very pleased if we came back with all these things. It's my understanding and I, this is not a quote to go anywhere necessarily, but that Smart eventually wants, like, the plan is not that we're gonna have all these regionals anymore, that it will all be with Smart, which it kind of is already. But things could change very drastically in the next couple of years. And we'd kind of be back to square one. Hey, and then if we just bought a hundred something thousand dollar trolley, who would like? Noda likes us. Smart doesn't necessarily know us or care if we run, run trolley.
Are we safe for witches' night? Like, will they come out for that? Because with that, there's quite a bit of.
Well, there's not.
No?
No.
I'd say I strike that from the record. Yes. All very behaved, idiots out there that night.
This is a family-friendly.
Got it.
That is what we tell people, you are welcome.
Yes.
Hearing this expression.
Now, sorry if it's been maybe brought up before, but I know the nostalgia and the cuteness of a solid trolley is a great idea. Has it ever been considered to have maybe like a mini bus or shuttle bus decorated like a trolley to get through, to grow the program?
Yes. I think that, I thought I remember somebody saying that they won't wrap it. They won't wrap it to look like a trolley. And having a bus is.
I think that was Scott.
Takes away from, I mean, it's not, we're not, the current program is not intended to be a transportation.
Right.
Program, and so it is the vibe of a trolley.
Right.
We can't wrap a bus to make it look like a trolley and it's just a bus going back and forth. No one's gonna use it. That was kind of a conversation.
That's pretty much already a bus, but.
Right.
So what is the board's pleasure at this point to move on to? Say we're going to take care of the next events through November or, or December, I mean, or what are you doing?
Well, I think for, from my side, I need to get thoughts from Lake Orion if they're interested in continuing to partner. Not to say that we have to move forward with them, but if they're not interested whatsoever, that ends that conversation, right? That option is no longer on the table. So getting that information, I also do need to look in with Noda to see. So getting that information, I also do need to look in with Noda to see what happened this past weekend and see how feasible it will be to have drivers on the weekends, if we have somebody specifically saying they're not going to do it. What I would like to see is we, you know, just kind of more structure around a plan. If we're going to sunset it, this portion phase one of trolley out, communication, so people aren't expecting it to come back in March. Having that information from the EV committee, maybe a little more structure around how to move forward, order solid numbers, locations to go. And then I think grants for me, I love the idea of like having a grant, if we can get a grant to subsidize or even in part of what we're looking to try and do, I think that changes the conversation here, certainly, also.
I have some more suggestions on grants, very much.
Okay. What kind of, I know you just asked, but like, what kind of motion are we looking for? Do we want to kick the can, or are we looking for action?
I mean, I think we have to have some kind of action plan going forward at this point, because again, A, speaking to Noda to find out exactly what happened, and, you know, are they, are they going to be able to provide drivers to get us through November, or, excuse me, October, which would be like our regular agreement was? And then carry out, you know, the couple of things like that. And I think at this point, you know, Noda's basically has that opinion already that, you know, St. Patrick's Day is off the table, no matter what, at this point for next year. So I mean, that's, in essence, I think a good hard conversation then with Orion and everybody back and forth and explaining, you know, and, I mean, have Noda, you know, Noda come to that meeting between Oxford and Orion, the three of them sit down together and laying it out there, explaining to it, because again, you know, if you're telling, telling us, then tell Orion, say, no, we can't do it, you know, because they will not drive for that kind of an event.
I think it's very helpful to have Lynn there. She can explain it so much more eloquently than I can in terms of what's going on and all of the changes coming up. So I can schedule a time with Lake Orion and Lynn.
Yes.
I have a question slash potentially motion eventually. If we're going to continue on kind of status quo with what we had originally planned, I do think that we should look at the math and re-invest the sponsors that are going to be missing out on four weeks. I don't have to say A, but if there's a way we can.
Yeah, we can definitely, we can map that out for sure. And I think we had talked about, um, I know one in particular, you know, could we do like some sort of, you know, first, you know, of in-kind, so like, would you want, because some of them are part of most of our events, so could we do, you know, helping them hit a month of the trolley, could you, you can get a free sponsorship at this event? Or you could be a sponsor here. Do you think that would be reasonable? Or do you, are you indicating like a financial, like, let's kind of check?
I would give them the option of it, however. And tell them what the value is of their sponsorship. Because if I'm a business owner, you promised me however many weeks, and I know I've been shorted four weeks, I'm going to have a very different answer than I have, William.
I think luckily the two businesses are pretty easygoing.
From Orion's standpoint, as far as their money's coming forward, as far as sponsors and everything, we don't have anything directly from a sponsored, uh, we?
What about a potential like photo op during soup and sweet?
I mean, yeah, we can definitely work with them.
Like with the trolley sort of thing, that, I mean, that could be utilized as, if it's not driving, it could be something where people, for the nostalgia, it could be a photo op and in-kind, well, not in-kind, they already sponsored, but then it could be them tagged all over the place for the trolley, like parked in the square, yeah.
You could do, yeah.
Have, have Christmas music playing in there, have, you know, little, it, it could, it could be used as, yeah, I mean, you know, think about like the truck events and things like that where people walk through a fire truck, woo, you know, same thing with the trolley, you know, the whole scene is, and I, I mean, it goes with like the Christmas theme and such.
So one other thing really quickly, because you know, I'm about to move on, but those that have, maybe have not heard, another thing. There was a police report filed, um, last week because there was evidence of a small fire inside of the trolley. That a person intentionally built a small fire to keep warm in the back of the trolley. So we are relocating it. It's no longer safe for it, or safe for us to have it sitting in the lot that it's currently sitting in. So I've worked with Joe. He's been agreeable to have it moved to this lot, temporarily, because there is an oil leak on the trolley as well. Um, so the oil, he doesn't want the oil kind of ruining the new parking lot. Okay, rightfully so. So, um, we're still looking for a landing spot.
I have some. Um, I will make a motion for us to continue through the current contract as previously stated, Sam's, um, St. Patrick's Day event. First motion.
I support. I'll support.
Moved by Ross, supported by
Canales.
Canales. Again, that's to keep it running, or to honor the current contract that we have through April without St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
Any questions? It's not financial, is it? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Pogues, same thing? All right.
I will make another motion. This would be to reimburse our current trolley sponsors four weeks or equivalent through sponsorships and other opportunities.
Support, been moved by Ross, supported by Negocia, to reimburse or honor or do whatever with our current sponsors to make them, make them whole. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I pose, same thing? Okay.
I will make one more motion. I will make a motion to sunset the current trolley program as we search for something different, but that April would be the end of this current program as presented.
Support. Been moved by Ross, supported by Negocia, to sun, sunset it as of, at the end of the current contract, whatever that date is in April. All right, any questions?
Uh, I would like to say something.
Yes.
I've heard quite a bit, um, a lot of what I've heard concerns me. You know, this whole discussion. I think obviously it's bringing a lot to the community, um, in terms of nostalgia and stuff like that, but I think also man, the risk and everything that we're, a, a small fire, it's, it's crazy. I think it needs to be better thought out. And I think we need to come back with, if we've lost credibility and people don't know when it's running, I think we need to come back with a better plan. And then also, it's a depreciating asset at the end of the day, right? And so we're always going to be shelling money out for it. So we need to be looking out over top of that, instead of kind of in like this reactionary position that we're in right now with it. So I think, you know, whatever that looks like, I think it's, it's valuable for the businesses, but I think that we need to, we need to readjust, you know, a little bit here, if possible.
Good plan going forward, all right. So we need to vote on that motion. So, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pogues, same thing? All right. Moving on to nine, new business. Resolution for ARCA. Do you have that in front of us? What this does is basically having them reconsider or amending our original grant request, because we are not able to provide the crosswalks, which were part of the original request. And so that's what this request is to go down to before the commissioners.
Yes, and so this packet that, this is, the reason why it wasn't included in our packet is because it has not been formally approved at the Oakland County level. So I didn't want it to be part of the public, um, information just yet. But that just would be what we were, I wouldn't view agreement looks like, and it kind of walks through the changes of what we originally submitted back in twenty twenty-four and what we're, what has been changed. We had a call last week with all of the communities that have received this program. Excuse me. We are not the only one that's in this boat. A lot of communities are experiencing, say, increasing costs. Excuse me. So there's a lot of communities that have to do this.
I will make a motion to approve, um, the resolution of the Oxford, oh my gosh, resolution. To the ARCA projects as presented.
Move, moved, Ross, supported by Negocia, on the agreement for the MSOC placemaking of public space program between Oakland County and the Oxford DDA. Any questions or thoughts? We'll call on this board.
Jay Choi?
Yes.
Melissa Canales?
Yes.
Pete Schultz?
Yes.
Ashley Ross?
Yes.
Jacob Negocia?
Yes.
And Holly Piper, yes.
And, we'll wait for her to show us back. Unless Jess has the information on the committee member recommendations.
Yes, we have two. One of them is Jacob Ryan, who's the husband of Maite Marie Moore. Where they, I believe that he
Yes.
So we have him, and this has been that. And Sam, I forget what his other name is, but Sam, another one that Brian had recommended. I tried to get in contact with him, he hasn't answered me back. He's almost understood me, he can't. So, maybe he doesn't know. I don't know if there's a process that has to be, you have to vote? I don't know how these.
I think there's an application, and then they come and move them, and then I think the chair presents it or makes a recommendation, we have to vote on.
Correct.
She, we have Jake, and I don't know if she seems definitely interested. So you got a way to the next month?
Jay, a question for you. Did one of these guys attend the EV committee already?
Jacob did. Jacob Ryan attended the one, not this past week, but the month before.
Jake, he seemed pretty interested in.
Yeah, seems like he has some kind of experience with, I don't know, some kind of downtown experience, I don't know, was Texas or what?
They own a business down in Texas. They've both been very involved since they got here.
Yeah.
I think he'd be, they'd both be an asset to any committee.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of it, but great personality. I thought he was a good addition. So, I don't know who Sam is, but yeah, Jake. He's a pretty big history buff too, so him and Brian are just.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jacob Ryan to the EV committee pending all of the work is turned in.
Then moved by Ross, supported by Jay. That Jake be appointed to the EV committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Pogues, same thing? Then you guys can get his paperwork followed up and hook me up with him so I can talk to him then.
You do have his paperwork, so I'll send it to you.
All right. Very good. Next thing?
Oh yeah, we have contracts over here, I have a lot of, all sorts of, I read it's great, thanks. Should be, we're there. We're there, I'm good.
All right, next, uh, new business would be nine, see the skyline lights.
We can actually skip that one because I did not receive the quote as I was supposed to.
Okay.
I do have a question on that, Principal. Uh, what are you, in, in terms of the quote, what are you looking for? Are you looking for more of a maintenance contract or just a repair?
So, the way that it was explained to me is the lights that were put up are not intended to be exterior lights.
Permanent lights, yeah.
Permanent lights, and that the lifespan of those lights were only guaranteed for two years. So, uh, we're at that point where we need to look at another solution. And, um, Excel Brothers has another solution for us, but it is incredibly costly.
A question to ask when you're talking to them before the quote comes. Will they be using, if we move forward with it, the same clips that attached the lights currently? No. Okay. So that is part of the problem. I know. Nothing's easy, right? And so the question that, um, we had talked through is, the current lights go out now when there's an option for them to go down? We have, so, I will tell you this, we had a discussion previously. They can't go down. It will not go down, um, the museum building.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, I just, where they are and the materials that they use, and then, I'm leaving them. I'll just have you be a part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, he was supposed to put quotes together for all of the options, and then I figured once we had a conversation, he could come back and talk and answer questions. Because he did ask if we wanted to have them just at the tops of the buildings, or if we wanted to go down in a vertical manner as well, and I said we did. Because I remember the conversation from before, it's, I think we originally started.
We already voted on it.
Yeah. So, um, this is, yeah, we'll plan to, to do that next month, but I will engage you in those kinds of sessions.
So how, how it was attached was very specific, so that it could be removed from the museum, and so we'll have to have those conversations, and if they can't do it, there would need to be more conversations and more expense to that.
That's the thing, it's the expense around the, um, attached, what do you call, things that attach the lights.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
In speaking with him, did he throw a ballpark number out there, kind of like, I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it around that.
This was months ago when we were first talking, because there were so many issues last year, especially in the northeast quad. The water was getting in at the breakers and popping the breaker like every other day. And that was because the, the wires are not intended to be out exterior light, out, I think you know what I'm saying? So we were having conversations then, and at that point, it was eighty-eighty-five thousand for a full replacement.
I'm not buying the trolley.
Now, a question, are they currently on a photo cell or are they on a timer?
They are on a timer.
Okay. Because I noticed now earlier in the morning, at six o'clock in the morning, they're off already, and it's like, it's dark out.
So we usually switch it choiceier, right around when we do the time change.
Okay.
But we can always, we can request to change it at any point. Some of the timers are harder to get to. And require like getting up on a roof or something, but some of them are a little easier.
Okay. As long as we're talking lights then, the next item, the Christmas lights.
Yes. So we met with Mickey to talk through the Christmas lights. The proposal is the last page in your packet. There is a new feature this year, then, that we discussed about, because we have fewer trees in the park, which are then we have fewer lights. And what we've had historically, we came up with an idea to have like a photo opportunity with lights. It would be like a screen, different color lights, we can change the colors, have them move around them, and people can take pictures of those. That is not a mandatory feature, but it would just be something extra to add. So financially, we're looking right around the same amount that we set up next year minus this, um, additional piece of twelve sixty-five. There was an increase in costs for the, the lights on the poles and the installation, just because they're spending more time, and they do have to, um, put new lights on the poles, because the ones that we've had historically haven't been weathered.
I'm assuming that they're not putting them on the flagpole this year? The lights on the flagpole?
No. I think they was there, well, like permanently for a little while, and then they were removed.
If it's.
Well, plus question, the lighted photo area. Says it comes with remotes to control the lights, so we would be responsible for turning on and off every day?
I think that would just be some. I think that would just be so you could change the lights. We would not have to control. We could have a timer to turn them on and off, but if we wanted to change the.
Colors.
Light green or whatever and the collar, yeah.
I do have a question on that. The boxwoods that we did, is that something we could do where we put lights inside those instead of paying for a screen? Or are you just thinking just to get more light?
So, yes, we could do that ourselves in Washington Square, absolutely. We did discuss the idea of using a boxwood as the background for these lights. His idea was requiring just some reconstruction of the boxwood planters. And I said, that's not an option after everything that we've been through with those. We're not going to take them apart. But the other consideration was once we move those planters, if we were to do that and move those into the park with the lights, they're not going anywhere for the remainder of the season because they start to sink into the ground. And do we want to have that there all winter? No, the answer is yes. So, yes, we do not have to do that piece. That's not a management piece.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How does this, how does this compare to last, last year's price? Is it a little bit more, a lot more?
So the Christmas, the light poles is one hundred and sixty-five dollars more than last year. The bows is a hundred and thirty dollars more than last year. The Christmas tree itself is the same amount as last year. The difference is we had, they're going to be wrapping the trunk of the tree, the larger tree on the north side of the park, just to add some sparkle on that side. When in the past they hung these like spritzer things to the trees that were cut through. So, you know, it's the four sixty-five plus the one thirty and that plus the twelve sixty-five. So that's fourteen fifty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the entire holiday package in the amount of ten thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars.
A second or support?
Okay, it's been moved by Ross to approve the entire package of ten thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and supported by Piper. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Melissa Canales.
Yes.
Jay Choi.
Yes.
Holly Piper, yes. Jacob Nicosia.
Yes.
Ashley Ross.
Yes.
Pete Schultz.
Yes. Nine E, the Detroit Institute of Arts Inside Out.
Yes, so this is off record, on the record, off the record. We have been selected community for the two thousand twenty-six Inside Out program, which is very exciting. So we've been allowed ten pieces that will be, be installed in our community in May. We are not able to communicate formally at this time because the two thousand twenty-five program is still going on. So they need to close that program out and make sure all, all applicants have been communicated to before we can officially tell our community formally, so Joseph. You didn't hear any of that. But we have a meeting scheduled in mid-October where they're going to come to this city and take a look at our community and help us decide where the pieces should go and talk about the vibe of the pieces. So if you have any recommendations on where they should go or any specific pieces of art you would like to see, we can definitely pass it along.
A question on, how are they displayed or affixed or?
Yes, so they can be either attached to the building or they can be on stands. So if they're on a stand, it's typically a smaller piece of art. If it's larger, it can be attached to a building. And they were talking about how they, it was very high level, but they do it in the ground so that when, I don't know if that's the right term, but, so that once they're gone, they can fill it and it would look like it was never there.
I'm telling you, the D A can color match like no other, so. Like I'm concerned, they're, they're the people to do it.
Yep. Okay, cool. All right, then. Nine F, our DDA board annual meeting.
Yes, so according to our bylaws, we say that we are having an annual meeting every September. I don't know if this is that annual meeting or if we want to have another annual meeting or if we want to push it into October. I don't know what the requirements are to post it. I don't think we have anything legally that we have to post. I don't know what you've done in the past where.
I, I don't recall anything separately. I mean, it was part of the posted agenda to begin with, with everything, it was explanation part of it.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we hold it November, in October, when everybody's aware of it and then put it as part of the.
It could be like a super quorum or anything.
Sure.
It's a super.
Everybody see.
Is that everybody?
Pretty much.
Because we do need for legal purposes, we have to have two informational meetings per calendar year. And we did one earlier this year, I would say January, February, I think it was January because I wanted to get, report our audit. And then I had requested to do one at the village council meeting in either October or November. So that'll suffice that requirement. But, yeah, we can just get that on, you know, October. So I don't know if you need to make a motion that we're going to postpone it until October so that we're following our bylaws.
So moved.
Support. So it's been moved by Ross, supported by Schultz to postpone it until the annual meeting of the Oxford DDA until our October meeting. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Poked, same thing. October. Nine G is a redevelopment liquor license.
Yes, so after additional information, we don't have any actions this time, but it just says ahead, Benny's branch is going to be going through the application process for a DDA redevelopment liquor license. And so I've been talking with Joe about that. He's very aware of it. I'm working with Benny's attorney. So we are all moving forward in that direction. But just as I had. Once we get closer, I mean, do we have to do a motion here? I mean, I assume that you would want to approve it before it goes to council formally. Okay. Do you want to have the attorney come and speak on it or?
Personally, I think for informational reasons, I would want to hear their side, whether what, you know, why do they want to, what are they going to do, that kind of a thing.
Okay.
Rather than just saying, we want a liquor bill.
Okay.
I think everybody would feel comfortable knowing what it's going to be for and how it's, you know, what they're proposing to do.
Okay. So where we're at is they're pushing hard to move forward now. Joe, I believe, is interested in not moving forward at this time. He wants to get closer to when the business opens. So I think there's a disconnect on the timing. So I know Joe's out this week. Once he gets back, I'm going to schedule time with him and this attorney and myself to kind of talk through the proceeding.
I mean, I'm assuming they would want to know it upfront because if they have to put something out of a bar or, you know, that kind of, you know, stuff or infrastructure inside of there specifically for that, they would want to know that at the design phase.
Right.
Okay. And then nine H, MSOC Town Rooms.
Yep, so I said, this is just a heads up or a conversation. John Brey, who is like the head of Main Street Oakland County, wants to visit communities and kind of touch base, see how things are going, hear what's working, what's not, what can he help with. So I sent out an email to provide any dates that absolutely don't work for you in the next month. And then we'll try to schedule something so that a good selection of you, a mini forum can be there instead of a super.
All right. Very good. Ten, items removed, the consent agenda, there were none. Board member comments? I'll start with Holly.
Oh, I was going to say, the takeover you girls did, the Main Street takeover. It was a lot of fun seeing the different videos and posts and stuff that you guys did. I thought you did a nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was all Josh. Job done.
Great job with that, ladies, and I'm very excited about Scarecrow Fest and all the fun things coming up.
Yes.
Good to see our Lions get back on. Here and score some points and excited about Scarecrow Fest, so go Lions.
Ashley. It's kind of an exciting time for the next month. We got quite a bit going on with the scarecrow and with the witch's night, a family night.
Every day.
Coming up. And again, they're both, both draws to downtown. I mean, there's people that come from all over for, for both days. I mean, a lot of out of town people, everything, so it's exciting to get them to town and everything and show them around and everything. So looking forward to, to that and with the holidays coming forward. So Jess and Kimberly, thank you, you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it. So keep up the good work. And at that point, any extended public comment? Seeing none, extended didn't come. And motion to adjourn? Eight twenty-six. All in favor?